1,974th Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Council. Today is August 9th of 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Councilman Rob Donavich tonight.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. Tonight is a regular meeting which will be a voting meeting. The minutes of this meeting will be approved on August 21st of 2023. Ms. Nash, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Donavich?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Present.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have six members tonight. Our absence is from Mr. Barr, who is away on personal business. At this time, I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes of the July 24th regular meeting.
Shall move.
Sport.
We have a motion to approve by Toy, support by Donavich. Are there any comments or additions from the council? I see none. Are there any additions or comments from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on the minutes, please.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes are approved. At this time, the council has set aside 30 minutes for the audience to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda tonight. Is there anybody who'd like to address the council at this time on any non-agenda items? If there is, please line up at either podium if you are able to, and you will have three minutes to do so. Ms. McIntyre, our council parliamentarian, will be taking the time. Good evening, sir. Please tell me your name and address.
Oh, thank you. Christopher Martin and the great state of Michigan. I just want to mention a something that occurred on Five Mile. This is at the Majestic Care Center. This happened recently where a patient left that place and laid down in Five Mile. Staff came out to get him out, get that individual out of the road, and there was a severe accident and a nurse was killed over there. Eighty-year-old driver. One of the most dangerous places within the city is the Senior Center parking lot. I've seen seniors drive by there looking at the entrance, thirty to thirty-five feet, never looking out their windshield. Recently, in leaving the place over there, I'm walking in front of some guy who's driving too fast in the parking lot, and I go like this, never slowed down. I had to run out from in front of his car. Monday, one of my vehicles was hit in the parking lot. No note, no I'm sorry, no nothing. The person took off. We have, and the police did an interesting statement here. This is referring to the Five Mile incident. Livonia Police do not believe alcohol played a significant factor in the incident. She wasn't impaired by alcohol. She was impaired because she was old and shouldn't have been behind the wheel. Didn't hit the brake, didn't mention anything about really slowing down, just like the guy I mentioned in the parking lot at the Senior Center. He didn't slow down. He swerved out of my way, but I had to run out from in front of his vehicle. So I don't know what solution is to this. I do know that the new Senior Center will be supposedly built in a location where I hope they don't share parking lots over there, the rec center and the new senior place, because that would be a real disaster, I think. So it's very unfortunate. This woman should never have been behind the wheel. You'll never know her name. Her family should have taken the keys away from her before she killed somebody, which is what occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Um, Andrea, 34930 Muggler Drive, 4154.
Go ahead.
Um, I've owned my home for 13 years and been a taxpayer for 15 years prior to that with many affiliations and experiences here, including Montessori, Ladywood Schoolcraft, working at Angela Hospice, volunteering in the public schools. My family goes to St. Mary's Basilica and 90% of my family live here. I'm here because I've had plans since the spring to put a privacy fence in and received a call on the first from my company saying that I am required to pay $450, appear in front of the zoning board, and wait for a hearing and answer like some crazy questions. And I really do enjoy, care, and appreciate my neighbors and respect their rights for green lawn, noisy equipment, and to grow whatever they like. But there's absolutely no privacy, given that it's like a planned community and every window you can see in every window. So since I purchased the home 13 years ago as a single mother, I was super excited to start a garden. I made community flyers, but soon found out that for community to garden. But soon found out instead of that, I would receive multiple ordinance violations for compost, weeds, and garbage. I've continued to work and cultivate an organic garden through a regenerative process despite fertilizers or pesticides and overspray killing the living soil and plants that I've worked on. Spent numerous amounts of money on soil amendments and whatever privacy I could do to create. In March, through compromise, my... So in 2020 and through 2022, I had a bunch of hardships with the world pandemic and the whole right side or left side of my house that's adjacent to my neighbors, they have a thing there, their garage. There's no, I don't go over there, perfect garden area, but it had like weeds and stuff. So everybody, my neighbors agreed, we compromised, knowing about the ordinance and that we can't have it to the front of the house. We called the city and the guy said, "It's a civil issue. Your neighbors say it's okay." I went ahead, put a $6,000 deposit down in March or April, found out through research that pre-treated, which was cheaper, was not good for horizontal. So I had to go through the process of getting refunded, put another $8,000 deposit down to get cedar. In the meantime, paying $2,000 to get my trees removed and a $17, $170 tax bill due in September. So I would really like to get my fence put in in September or October when it's planned. I guess that would be great. I don't know what to do about that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Uh, good evening. My name is David Franco. I am a director at a local nonprofit in Northville called the Living and Learning Enrichment Center. We help teens and adults with disabilities with development of their social work and independent living skills. But we also do have a satellite location here in Livonia at the Livonia Rec Center. The reason why I'm here tonight is because I would like to find a way to initiate discussion with the council about starting a new committee, a committee for disability affairs. I'm going to be attending city council meetings throughout the metro Detroit area to try to get this started in as many municipalities as possible. The purpose of the committee would be to advocate for people with disabilities, handle things like municipal accommodations. There's all kinds of accessibility issues, for example, for people who are wheelchair-bound. There's training that could be provided to your local police office, giving officers the tools that they need when confronting somebody with a disability. They can be responsible for raising awareness within the community for your residents and for local businesses. We can teach local businesses about the concept of neurodiversity while helping them support your special needs programs in your local school districts, which I know can use the assistance. The most important way that this committee could help, though, is by being a resource for services and just any kind of resources that are available for people with disabilities. There is no manual that's available for parents when they're raising a child with a disability. They have nowhere to go. They have no idea what to do a lot of times. This municipal committee would be a resource for them to provide the guidance on finding services and just navigating this horrible process. It's hard enough that they got to deal with this, let alone try to figure out how to get their kids the supports that they need. So I beg of you to please at least talk with me somehow. Help me figure out how to get this committee started. I know that no municipality has the funds available immediately to get a new committee started like this, but I guarantee you that we can find parents who would be passionate about this enough to volunteer to get the program started initially. So I'm open to any kind of suggestions and I just would like to find a way to get something like this started.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If there's no other audience communication at this time, we will go to the council. Ms. Toy has a response to the gentleman who just spoke.
Mr. Franco, if I may through the chair, um, thank you for bringing up the very important topic. I happen to have a brother that was disabled his entire life and I know some of the challenges we have. And when I was in the state, we did that such committee on disabilities. We had, uh, one of our lobbyists had that skin-eating disease and ended up very impaired from that and disabled. I know that our Human Relations Commission at one time did a bunch of stuff on disabilities and I'd be happy to talk to you about that a little bit more when and if you have time. And I just want to commend you for the programs you do in Northville. You do, you do an outstanding program for folks and their families and I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
At this time, Ms. McIntyre is going to announce the July retirees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our July 2023 retiree retirees were Laura Cosio from the Clark's Office, 25 years and six months; Jeffrey Bennett from the Livonia Fire Department, 25 years and nine months; and Anthony Price from the Fire Department, 18 years and five months. We thank all of these outstanding individuals for their great service to the city over many years. We have the best, I will say, the best workforce of any city in the state and probably the country. And when we lose folks through retirement, we always hate to see them go, but we also are happy knowing that they're looking forward to a long and we hope healthy and happy retirement. So congratulations to these three great people and they'll be missed, but wishing them all the best in retirement. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Would it be appropriate for the council to ask someone from the administration to maybe reach out to the resident that is having the issue with the fence? I just know that fences can sometimes be a very convoluted situation and the laws and the rules you have to abide by and clearly she's having a difficult time getting that done. I don't think it's reasonable to get it done in the timeframe you kind of alluded to just because it sounds like you have to go to the ZVA, which is a normal process. But I do understand that it's confusing and I know when you spend that much money on a privacy fence, it is a lot of money. And if you're having troubles, I'd hope that someone from the administration can reach out, maybe explain it better if you're not understanding or maybe there is a situation going on that we can kind of help out and alleviate some stress. So I would just hope that she took the time to come here tonight. Council could ask the administration to maybe look into that.
Ma'am, you can't just speak like that. I'm sorry. I would just say I don't think it's necessary for us to take a vote on that matter. We'll ask Ms. Casper, who's in our office, to get in touch with the woman and put her in the right direction. Okay? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to give a shout out to the St. Andrews Society of Detroit. We just celebrated the Highland Games at Greenmead. It was a blast. I know a lot of council and city representatives were there to support. And what a great, what a great couple of days. I learned after an extremely long amount of time that I had my kilt on backwards and I was told, but you live and you learn. You know, I share that McCullough last name. So for next year, I'll make sure it's on the right way. But again, we want to thank them for choosing Livonia year after year. It's turned into a wonderful event and it's great for our city. So kudos to that. The second thing is, one of my other hats I wear is I'm the director of girls hockey for Livonia Hockey Association. And this Friday, we're having a big fundraiser at Burton Manor. If you go to livoniahockeyassociation.com, you can find, and there's still tickets available. All the proceeds are going to benefit the association and we're right in a good time of growth, seeing exponential growth on the boys and girls side. But we do need to continue to support. So if you're looking for some fun, get out there and have a good time on Friday. I think it starts at seven. Make sure you get your tickets. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre?
On the subject of the Highland Games, I echo everything Mr. McCullough said and I'd like to recognize someone who's in our audience tonight. My friend Suzanne Williams, been a dear friend for many years and we know each other through our parish and lots of other ways. Suzanne is the oldest active member of the St. Andrews Society and every Highland Game, you can find her working the security detail out at the Money House, but is there for the entire day of the festival. Always a joy to see her and just wanted to personally thank her for her dedication to society and being such a great ambassador for Livonia through the work you do. So thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you. At this time, our mayor has asked for a moment to address the council and our community in regards to some of the meetings that recently took place with DTE Energy. Mayor?
Good evening, council, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the chance to fill you in on what transpired today. We had the good fortune of gathering this morning with representatives from DTE specifically to talk with them about improving the reliability of our electric power in Livonia. Livonia was especially hard hit late in July with that last catastrophic storm that we had. And there were about four communities that were impacted more than others in the area. Unfortunately, Livonia was one of them. And while we pride ourselves on being a city of trees, those trees clearly got in our way when it came to restoring power in our community. There were a couple of other things, though, that got in our way as well and that's what we wanted to talk to DTE about today. So we had with us Jerry Norcia, who is the CEO of the company, Joe Masalem, who is here today. He is the Vice President of Operations. And Joe is gonna bring you up to speed on some of the things that DTE plans on doing as a result of the meeting that we have, fill you in on some of the outcomes. We've got Tony Ignaciak, who's an engineer, Gil Solazik, who is going to be helping us on the emergency management, the EOC side of things. Kirsty Stallins and Barbara Reichwalder are the dynamic duo behind consumer complaints and just general issues when they come in. They are our first point of contact when we get together or when we have issues in our community. In addition to that, we had 11 members of our leadership team. Brian Khan is here today. Brian primarily leads this effort when we have storm outages. One of the things that we've committed to as a community is making sure that when we have outages and there are a higher frequency of them now, given changes in weather patterns, we are calling a partial opening of our emergency operating center so that we are quickly able to gather any of the resources that we need in the city and then determine what kind of response on a regular moving forward basis we need to take in order to respond to some of the things that are happening and transpiring. In addition to helping us to respond to storms, this is typically what we've been doing. This is also phenomenal practice for when crises become significantly greater than the damage created by a storm. We covered a number of areas and I just want to bring you up to speed on what those were in this conversation. First, we talked about unreliable residential service areas. There are some key areas in our city that are getting hit harder than others and we wanted to see if what we were experiencing in the phone calls that we were getting from residents matched with the data that DTE was getting. And lo and behold, it does. And it caused us to kind of figure out where some of these critical areas are, where some of the infrastructure needs to be improved, where tree trimming needs to be more aggressive, and how do we bring back these areas of our community quicker as a result of making some of those improvements? So you'll hear from Joe about those. The other thing we talked about was critical infrastructure. Our Civic Center campus and our Kirksey Recreation Center have all been out of power over the course of some of these major storms. And we explained to DTE that you can't operate a city if the main hub of your operation doesn't function. If your fire station and your police station are operating on generator power, they can do that for a very, very long time. But in the case of the Kirksey Center, that is our cooling and warming station. That is an area where we can't afford to see power go down. So DTE has arrived at a solution for us. Again, I'm gonna let Joe share with you what we've got along that front. The second area or the third area that we talked about was our Incident Command Operating System. So as I explained to you, we open up a partial emergency operating center whenever we have a storm outage. We wanted to make sure that DTE was functioning in that same way in treating outages as emergencies. And we do think that with some structural changes on their part, that we're going to be better able to communicate and better able to respond. There are ways for us to monitor using some DTE technology what's going on in electrical supply to some of our main structures in the city. DTE is committed to putting those monitoring devices in place. There are better ways for us to track outages using a backloaded outage map that they are gonna pilot here in the city of Livonia. And again, you'll hear Joe talk a little bit more about what some of those, some of those fixes really are. The fourth thing we talked about was internal and external communication, just our ability to convey to our residents in a timely fashion what's happening, understanding that the usage or the outage maps, rather, are not necessarily reflecting in real time what's happening and is there a way to get better data faster? So we talked about ways to manage that and we talked about ways just internally to make sure that the right people in our administration are lining up and talking with the right people in the DTE organization. As a result of all of that, there are a couple pilot projects that we're going to be engaging with DTE and we're really excited about this because we really do believe that the best way to come to a table when you're dealing with a company as large and as important as DTE is, is to come as a partner, to come and to try to find a way to make things better for your residents. Understand, we did share all of the resident concerns delineated by name and by address and those are for DTE to respond to and we expect that they will respond. We expect that we will hear that they responded. But our role as government is get an opportunity to create larger scale improvement and that's what we were working on today. So we do think that there is a better way to engage with an emergency preparedness department and we're gonna pilot a project with DTE along those lines. And the second area that we really think we are gonna make some headway on is our ability to bury lines. Livonia has some unique opportunities where we are gonna be going and doing some infrastructure improvements in our community that happen to tie in directly with those areas where we have seen the highest number of outages in our city. And there are going to be opportunities for us to work with DTE to bury lines in those areas and to greatly improve their reliability in our community. So we're excited. We think that we've got some good partners sitting at the table with us. They're not afraid to be pushed and they didn't back off when we pushed hard against them. I want to thank President Jolly for joining us at that meeting today. It was important that we have him there. It was important that DTE understood that this was an issue that was important not only to this administration, but to the council as well. So Jim, thank you very much for your participation. I do want to introduce Joe Masalem to you. Joe is one of the lead fixers over at DTE and when things get really rough, it's my call to Joe that usually shakes things up. So we asked that he join us this evening and he was willing to do that and grateful for the opportunity. So Joe, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the partnership. Great meeting today. I'll talk a little about it. City Council, thank you for the time to be able to speak and hopefully at the end I can answer any questions that are available. And to the residents of Livonia, it's been a tough go, especially this year, that ice storm. If you were to design a new type of biblical plague, it'd be very similar to a ice storm that weakened the trees, a windstorm that further weakened them and then what we called concrete snow, some of the thickest snow we'd ever seen that brought whatever was remaining. In fact, one of the low-tech sophisticated mechanisms that we used at that time was I had a ring doorbell and there was a limb in front of my ring doorbell. We were using that as an ice buildup monitor for, I live down river area. And by about hour six, I looked at the ring doorbell and the limb was gone. So we knew we were in for an interesting event and we were. But that's gonna happen. We're feeling the weather intensify and it's gonna be on DTE to work through that. From a overall approach, you know, we're really taking multiple kind of tier action to the whole system. So I think the first is, we gotta trim our trees. In the city of Livonia, we're approximately about 70% trimmed. In a second, I'll talk about some of the circuits that are experiencing some of the issues particularly. No surprise, the trim cycle on those is a bit out. We embarked on this new trimming surge about six, seven, five or six years ago to get everybody on a five-year cycle. The circuits that are on a five-year cycle, we see some issues with occasionally, but it's at a much less, it's a much less frequency, especially when you have such large, mature, beautiful trees on the different parts of the property. Then once we're done with our trees, we can see the lines really clear. We're gonna go through on a five-year cycle and we're gonna do what we call pole top maintenance. That's gonna be the crossarms and, you know, taking them from wood and making them polymer, taking the insulators down, putting the newer style polymer insulators up, really a hardening type approach. You know, a large part, a large part of our system's gonna be completely converted. Electrification is a freight train coming down the tracks. We're very excited about it, but it's also gonna cause us to rebuild, you know, rebuild something like 30 to 40% of our grid over the next 10 to 15 years, primarily to increase the ability for amperage to run. And then, and then the last part of it's really gonna be in this one. It's one of the ones I'm most excited about. It's our automation technology. So right now, when a circuit goes down, oftentimes it goes all the way back to the circuit breaker like it would be in your house. What automation technology allow you to do is break the circuit up into like four pieces. So instead of losing the whole circuit, we lose a piece of it. You know, we're on a commitment and we're gonna get some very specific action items back to the mayor's office to install roughly 10,000 of those, bringing us up over the next five years to basically, you know, as good in class as anybody we can measure. Those things combined, we think are gonna take us to a really good place in the near future. But we have residents who are experiencing issues right now. So let me talk a little bit about some of the things we're seeing. So at a high level, we have approximately 69 unique circuits inside of Livonia. Seventeen of those are experiencing greater than one or two outages. You know, the vast majority of the country, around one outage is pretty common, two, okay. You start getting into three, four, five range, it becomes very frustrating. And then you add on the duration that often comes with these large storms that have high tree impact, it becomes even, it becomes more difficult. So for those circuits, we have identified, Tony, the engineer that's here with me today, has laid out each of those circuits. We've committed to the mayor's office to make sure that we have a plan for each of those. Some of those, the tree trimming may actually be okay. The vast majority weren't. But you know, let's say the tree trimming is okay. But we found out there was an area where they were having an issue. We're gonna go check out the circuit for any type of visible issues and then replace the equipment. Other areas, we might add some of those re-closers on a little earlier than we had planned to maybe get them a little better reliability as well. So we're gonna get that back. Our goal with that is gonna be to make sure that the city has a action, a plan with timing accountable to DTE that they can then share maybe on the website or through, you know, your individual representatives. For people on this circuit, this is what we're gonna do and by when. And then we're gonna make sure we give, provide updates to get us back to where we would like, we'd like everybody to be. So a lot of great stuff came from the conversation today with the city. It's really helpful for us when you come at it from a partnership approach because it's really exciting for me. I, you know, better way to put it is anytime there's an electrical problem at the company, anywhere in Michigan, it's literally my responsibility. So for me, it's really fun and exciting when you could partner with people to figure out ways to even better serve them and solve some of their unique problems that you're running into. I think the first one right off the bat is critical locations. You know, we had police fire, we had some of the critical infrastructure, the cooling center, which I believe the Civic Center wasn't identified for us. So I think that one of the first actions we're gonna do is our folks are gonna meet with the Public Works Team and we're gonna make sure that everybody's on the same page of what's important and the priority order. We would like it to be restored so that we're making sure we're hitting the right things and not restoring something. You know, we want to restore You know, we wanna restore everybody as fast as possible, but you know, you definitely wanna make sure the hospitals, the critical infrastructure, pumping stations, those are very high on the list because of the ramifications for them. We're gonna do a couple of things that I think will be helpful. Despite our best efforts, from time to time, crazy events can happen, you know, semi-trucks can hit poles, large trees 60-foot outside of a right-of-way can come in and cause a lot of damage or at scale. And one of the fastest ways for us oftentimes, sometimes offer benefit, is we can provide generation, but you gotta hook it up, and it's often a very complicated procedure to hook up. So we're gonna work on some of the, with the city on some of the critical areas, come up with a plan to say, hey, it might take us 16 hours to get the power back, but we could probably get a generator up and for what works better for you. So that when you have a critical place where people are going for heating or cooling or power to charge their phones in a large event, that stays up no matter what. So we're gonna work on, talk about some of those types of things. You know, I talked a little bit about the detailed plan. We're gonna provide both the city, the council, and the residents, and then follow up on with a very aggressive plan. One thing, kudos, we don't see this in a lot of communities. We really appreciate the CERT program. The ability, one of the things that happens often in a storm and emergency response is we can have thousands of wire downs, and that's our most critical. And it can sometimes slow down your ability to restore because you'd like to go work on the circuit, but you gotta go make sure the safety's covered first. When we have partnership and folks like that are operating on the CERT team able to get out ahead of us and oftentimes save us quite a bit of time and improve safety, it's great. So one thing we're gonna commit to is we share a lot of, you know, conversations, a lot of different communities about things we can work on better. We'd like to better understand it twofold. One, how can we take feedback from the CERT team directly into our own damage assessment tools so we can speed up process of restoration? And two, how can we maybe help other communities find a way to learn from some of the really great stuff we're seeing in the Livonia CERT space? So great program there. Better communication in emergency operations. So we stand up a large emergency center. The city stands up a very similar center. There's no reason that just can't plug in to each other in a similar way to, as we have a planning chief in ours that's kinda going through, we could plug our planning chief right in for daily updates on a storm. Something may have changed from the morning meeting we wanna share with the city. This is a very formal way for us to do it, and then, you know, hey, Joe, I know we told you these were the top two, but really this third thing is emerging. We really gotta get this pump station back. It's a big deal. So I think including, improving those operations are gonna be, again, another step change for us, for relationship. And then, you know, the undergrounding, you know, if I could snap my fingers and put it all underground, it'd be wonderful. But it does have a lot of cost, and it also has a lot of complexity, especially in developed communities where a lot of the current right-of-way space has already taken up. But there are ways we can do it, especially when we see opportunities like you're opening up a city street. I believe we talked, was it Five Mile? Yeah. There's a, you know, we're gonna add some more shoulder, or they're gonna add a little bit wider road, the shoulder's gonna open up. If that's the right type of wire at the right time, it's a great opportunity for us to come in and put some critical backbone in infrastructure. So looking for innovative ways to reduce the general cost overall for those, I think will be another great way for us to be able to collaborate going forward. So I think for me, in closing, we got a lot of work we gotta do. We're not happy with the service that's been provided to several of the residents on those troubled circuits, and you know, we're committed going forward to make sure that we put the best foot forward and then work as a team to try to get as best of service as we can going forward provided to the residents. So with that, is it okay if I ask for questions? Any questions from council or?
Yeah, I'll open up to my colleagues here if they wanna ask some questions. I just wanna thank you, you know, I wasn't able to participate the entire time in the meeting this morning, but it was impressive with the show of force that DTE brought to the meeting, and that's very appreciated. We've had these frustrations before, and we've never gotten quite this response, and I'm hopeful that this is a start of a new, stronger partnership that will serve our residents better. So it's very appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, council, Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Couse, President. One of the things, I was just kinda taking notes, and I do appreciate you guys. I know I've actually met you guys, some of you in the past recently. No, but appreciate you coming here. I think the biggest thing is having the deliverables. The specific deliverables, I think will go a long way. As a council member, you know, we can sit there and try to sell the story, but it usually goes, hey, we're gonna talk to DTE, we're gonna find out what's going on. And then next thing you know, it's fall and winter, and we don't react until there is a reaction moment. And so having that capital plan, whether it's maybe a zero to three, a three to five, a five to 10, that way we can help you sell the story and show the residents, this is actually what's happening. You know, when you are naming some of the parts and pieces to your trade, you know, it's gonna go over a lot of people's head, but you know, that is an enhancement to our grid, and I think that helps not only us, but it helps you guys as well. So I think getting those specific analytics and being able to broadcast out that to the residents is super, it's a huge benefit. The other thing I was gonna ask is, and maybe you guys already have this in place, but with local governments, do you guys have any kind of a coalition committee that meets with local government representatives, whether it's in the area, maybe biannually, just to sit down and say, hey, these are some of the analytics and goals we're hitting? I mean, it might go a long way. You know, you're in a trailblazing mode and, you know, I'm just trying to think what can, you know, what helps us that could obviously spread the word out to the residents. So this is just a thought.
Yeah, it's great. We're always looking for new ways. You know, some of the work we're really focused on right now is making sure police chiefs and fire chiefs have what they need, so we're meeting with a lot, trying to figure out how do we just better integrate better, and we're always looking for places. We do have some coalitions of mayors that we meet with across the state. I forget the specific name of it, I apologize, but there's a Down River one, a Washtenaw one, and some different Wayne County and some others. But always open if you think, hey, this would be a great place for DT to plug in. We're always looking for new ways to innovate and listen so we can figure out how to deliver things.
Yeah. In the world when Kohler is selling different colored generators in their marketing schemes, I think it's gonna get interesting, especially with this weather. So no, I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and yeah, keep us posted, whatever we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you very much. Appreciate everything that was done today and hear that there are firm deliverables and some plans in place, and thank you for being here tonight and representing DTE. I know it's been a tough slog for you guys. When you added critical buildings, and maybe this really should go to the mayor, were the senior housing developments or facilities included?
We include senior housing. It's in our system, is something we look at when we're doing restoration priority. But I think we wanna make sure specifically is, they do ebb and flow from time to time. So what used to be a apartment turns into senior housing. So we just need to make sure that everything that we have is lined up.
I'm talking specifically, and this is something probably for council to discuss with the administration. Our three senior living facilities or complexes, and I think it was two or three years ago, Silver Village, which is located very close to here, had a very extended power outage. And all populations are vulnerable, right? But as you know, seniors are especially vulnerable. There's a lot of electric medical equipment that's used, and they had an extended, so I would hope that we've put those on the list, and again, we should take that up with the administration.
Yeah. We'll take that as a takeaway to firm up what we have matches. We do have them, but I wanna make sure that they're as accurate as they can be.
Yeah, and being at the meeting, I can tell you, the mayor provided an extensive list of critical infrastructure, including the Livonia senior housing and others as well, the ones owned by us and otherwise.
Thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. No questions. I know a lot of questions were fielded today. I just wanna say thank you for coming out. There's hundreds of communities in Michigan, and every community is dealing with power outages, and I appreciate you and your team taking the time to come out. Thanks to the mayor, thanks to the department heads. This is something that's been a constant issue in Livonia that we as city council members are hearing from residents. All of council is consistently fielding concerns from residents and business owners. A number of my colleagues have talked to me about very important businesses in our community that are getting a lot of power outages. So I know you guys care because you're here tonight. You spent all day basically in Livonia. You're here this morning, you're here this afternoon, so I do appreciate it. It's not easy what you guys are going through. It's not easy for residents and businesses with this frustration of rates are getting higher, my energy bill's getting more expensive, my service feels like it's getting worse. But there's a lot of different contributing factors. I get that, but I do appreciate you prioritizing Livonia, and I hope this continues. That, I mean, you talked about 17 circuits here in Livonia specifically. I appreciate that number. It tells me that you guys are looking into it and have a plan in place. I do hope that any underground projects you guys have coming into the future, I hope Livonia is a big priority there, converting some of our above-ground wires underground. I know it's very complex, like you said, a lot of right-aways, people's backyards and trees and their gardens and sheds and whatnot. I can just imagine the hundreds of different scenarios that you guys have already thought of and are currently dealing with. But again, appreciate you coming out, spending the time with us, and looking forward to you converting a lot of our lines underground in the future.
Thank you.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you. And if I may echo a little bit of what my colleagues have said, thank you very, very much. I'm one of your people that has been out of power five different times this year. I don't wanna complain, but I do really get tired of going to the grocery store and my freezers, et cetera. And I'm sure you've heard that from other residents. Just yesterday morning, I went to make my coffee, and I was pretty frustrated because the power went out again, and I'm thinking of selling my house and moving away from city hall because every time they go out, I go out, it seems like. And that's no offense to you. I think what would really help is some kind of communication, as a mayor has talked about, as you're talking about, just to know, and people have been wonderful when you contact DTE, don't get me wrong. Charlie Mahoney used to work there, and I tell you, we'd call her up, in those days I was on council then, and my God, all of a sudden the power would go on, and they think we're heroines, and you know, it just helps because the neighbors come to us as leaders in this community, as serving on the council. We don't expect anything extra, don't get me wrong, but they come to us and question us, and I'm sure you've heard that. And I just wanna emphasize it because it's so important. We rely on so much on that power, and you know, I'm scared about an electric vehicle. What do you do? I mean, you know, what kind of issues are we gonna face there as governing bodies in these communities? So I appreciate anything you can do in this civic center area, not just for me, but for others, because it, like I said, it becomes very frustrating, sir. And I appreciate you being here in Livonia and taking a forward look at this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the outages. We'll do better.
She has a freestanding offer to crash on my couch. So, Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly say thank you. We appreciate you meeting with the administration and coming here tonight and explaining it to all of us and our citizens that are listening. I think that's very important, that they understand what's going on and what we're looking at and to fix this problem because it has been a big problem here in Livonia. So appreciate you. Thank you. I hope this plan works out very well and quickly. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna, I wanna point out that just about 11 hours ago, most of these people standing behind, sitting behind you and the mayor were just starting this meeting. So it's been all day affair. Thank you all for your effort, for your interest. And I wanna specifically, I wanna thank the mayor as well because I don't know who else would have pulled this team together and had the ability to do so. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you all. Thank you.
With that being said, we will move to the scheduled agenda tonight. I'll note that item 11 has been requested to be removed by the petitioners, Hunter's Grove Condo Association. It's my understanding that they are abandoning the request that they had put forward. We do have communications from the Department of Finance, one dated July 11th of 2023, forwarding quarterly investment reports for the city of Livonia, ending in the quarter of May 31, 2023, and another dated July 18, 2023, forwarding various financial statements of the city of Livonia for the month ending May 31, 2023. With that being said, we will move to the consent agenda tonight. That's items one through nine. These items were previously studied at the study meeting on July 24th and found to require no additional study, so they will be voted on as a single item tonight. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by McCullough, support by McIntyre. Do we have any comments from the audience in regards to the consent agenda, items one through nine tonight? I see nobody approaching the podium. I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda passes. We will move on to unfinished business. Tonight, that is a block party at number 10 from Maggie McGrane, Mick Grain, to be held on Saturday, August 26, 2023, from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Rayburn between Williams and Levan with no rain date requested. I'll go to the, come on up to the podium, but don't talk just yet if you don't mind. Can I have a motion from the council to get us started?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by McCullough. Ma'am, tell me your name and address. Are you Maggie McGrane?
Yeah, Maggie McGrane, 36730 Rayburn.
Thank you, ma'am. Tell us about the block party.
Pretty typical. Barbecue, games, I think we're gonna have a water slide this year, so very exciting stuff. Some music, cornhole, et cetera.
Sounds good. Have you done this before?
Yes.
Okay, always a success?
Yeah, yeah, it's fun. Good day.
Let's keep it going and, you know, good signs. Is there anything from the council? We have a motion to approve. I'll ask the audience, is there any audience comment on item number 10? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Your block party is approved. Thanks a lot for coming out. Good luck.
Thanks.
Item 11 again is removed. Item 12 is the proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances from the Department of Law regarding petition 2023050301 submitted by David Hoard requesting to vacate a surface drainage easement at 17260 and 17270 Carroll Drive on the east side of Carroll Drive between Six Mile Road and Harrison Avenue in the southeast quarter of section 12. Can I have a motion from the council?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by McIntyre, support by Donovan. Oh, first, I'm sorry.
First reading.
So we'll give a first read to Ms. McIntyre if she has no objections here.
I have no objections.
And that item will come back to council for a second read at a later date. Is there any audience comment on item number 12? I see none. We'll move on to new business. Item 13 is an award of bid from the engineering division for the geotechnical exploration and engineering services for the proposed 12-inch water main crossing under I-96 west of Schoolcraft Crossover Bridge west of Hicks. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Donovan, support by McCullough. Mr. Zalinsik, can you give us some details here?
Sure. As you guys recently approved was the ordinance waiver for the M14 Sheldon de Newburgh project for MDOT next year. As part of that project, we want to fix the water main that's underneath I-96. They're just west of the Schoolcraft Bridge, west of Hicks, it's leaking. MDOT has decided to help us include it in their plans in the area that there'll be in the influence of construction. Eventually, we'll have to tie back the other portions outside the influence, but we're looking for your approval for SME to do the geotechnical as required as part of the permitting process in the amount of $22,500. And again, thank you, the design was done in-house by David Lear, assistant city engineer, saving us money. city engineer, saving us money. And again, the only cost would be for the geotechnical portion for this project. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any comment from the council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavich?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Zalinsik, so after this geotechnical work is done, is the water main going to be replaced when the 96275 construction is taking place or?
We're going to monitor it, yes. They said they would incorporate this information into their bid package, which is going out in the next month to get going on this project itself. So the goals will continue to monitor it as we have been. But in effort to complete this project as part of the package, they were able to work with us, facilitate this. But again, if there's an issue, you know, it's a slow leak itself, but we want to make sure we can do this as part of this project because I don't want to do it, fix it, and then have it be disrupted by the construction coming next year or whatever. So, you know, obviously, we'll maintain it like anything else in a water main break until that point in time where it can be completely redone in that right-of-way, in MDOT right-of-way.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there any audience comment on item 13?
So is it just comments and no question?
Yeah. Council meetings are not opportunities for questions from the audience. You can make comments in regards to the items.
Okay. I guess my comment...
Can you tell me your name and address, please?
Andrea and I live in Burton Hollow.
You have two minutes to address the council.
I'm just wondering what geotechnical exploration means.
Soil bores, Mr. President.
Mr. Zalinsik, go ahead.
Just soil bores. We're going to go down 30 feet to ensure what kind of soil exists there in order for us to, when you're doing directional drilling in that location, to make sure we have the information proper for the contractor that's going to do the soil boring, or the drilling of the new water main, to have the information as handy. Thanks.
Thank you. If there are no other comments from the audience, I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote on item 13.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item 13 passes. And that concludes the scheduled agenda for this evening. We will go back to audience communication. Is there anybody in the audience who has not yet addressed the audience at the beginning of the meeting who would like to address the audience on a non-agenda item at this time? I see no one approaching the podium. I'll go back to the council for any closing comments.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support from McCullough. I think we can safely show six on that. The regular meeting is now adjourned. We will start the scheduled eight o'clock meeting at 8:05.
Thank you.
Good night.